City Council Meeting, October 20th at 6:15 PM. Can we call the order, please?
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is committee, the whole, just a couple items here before we turn it over to you, President Barrow. We do have a proclamation for St. Joe's Catholic Church in honor of the Off the Streets ministry led by the Knights of Columbus Council 11370. And we have Father Eric here from St. Joe's to accept the proclamation and say a few words. You're certainly welcome to do that. I'd like to share this with everybody. The city of Maumee recognizes invaluable contributions of organizations that strengthen our community through compassion, service, and dedication to improving the lives of others. And the Toledo chapter of Off the Streets ministry, supported by the St. Joe's Maumee Knights of Columbus Council 11370 and other community partners, has made a profound impact in addressing homelessness in our region with volunteer-driven efforts that reflect the highest ideals of service, compassion, and hope to those in need. And whereas, since its founding here in 2021, Off the Streets has helped more than 1,000 individuals transition from homelessness to stable housing by providing essential support such as security deposits and donated furniture to create safe and welcoming homes. And whereas, the city of Maumee, Ohio, is honored to recognize Off the Streets ministry for its dedication to ending homelessness and for receiving the Knights of Columbus 2025 International Community Program of the Year Award. Therefore, be it resolved that I, James McDonald, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2025, as Off the Streets Ministry Day in the city of Maumee, Lucas County, Maumee, Ohio. Congratulations, Father Eric, for your services in our community.
I've never given up a chance at a microphone, so yes, I will take that, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of our Off the Streets Board and our founders, many of whom are all right behind me here, and frankly, they're the ones who get all the credit. They're the ones who came to me a number of years ago and said, "Father, we need to do this." And I said, "This is a big thing to do." And they said, "Well, this is being guided and led by the Holy Spirit, and so we need to do it." And so that is what started all of this. And it's remarkable to see what has happened over these past number of years and the people who have been helped. And our volunteers who lead all of this are so dedicated and so committed. I've gotten to go on a couple of the runs with them, and to be able to see the people that we show up at their house or their apartment, and they literally are sleeping on the floor. And then we come in with beds, dressers, housewares, and literally furnish the whole house. And to see the tears in the kids' eyes, in the mom's eyes, in the dad's eyes, it's really, really moving. And so every Saturday morning, this crew, as well as a ton of other volunteers, does at least three to four homes, and they do it every single week. Parishioners and people beyond bring furniture, and people donate all sorts of amazing furniture for these folks to have. And really, the big thing is, it shows dignity. It shows that we care for them. Many of them have gone through some really tough times. And rather than judge, we provide, we help, we show the face of Christ to them. And that is something that really has been a real blessing, and we pray that it continues to be a blessing. So just know, you are all welcome to volunteer at any time, and we'd love to have you. I know this crew would all love to have you as well. But this all started when Deacon Ed Ireland, one of our deacons, came to me along with Greg Schaefer, and they're the ones who initiated that. And then all the good folks behind here are the ones who continue the good work. Jim Demansky behind me is the grand poobah of the Knights of Columbus. And this year, we were recognized as the International Knights of Columbus Program of the Year. So like, international is remarkable. I mean, this is, I mean... So this is a big deal. And so to just have the city of Maumee recognize this really means a lot to us. It was also a way for us to get John Fiskus's parents here to make sure he's doing a good job. And so they decided to come up, and John said, "I made sure to put a nice suit jacket on to impress my parents." So nonetheless, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. It really does mean a lot to us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, Mr. Fiskus, bringing this forward and making it recognizable. It truly is what community is all about. What you're doing and what you're representing and how you're helping others is really what the community is all about. And we're proud to have you as part of Maumee and part of our community. So thank you for all that you do. Appreciate it. You certainly are welcome to stay, or you can leave. It's up to you. But it gets much more interesting after this.
So I read.
So we do have one other presentation from Dana Clark. If you would, come forward. Welcome, Dana. Dana is a PACE Administrator regarding the PACE financing to Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority, and it's relative to 10 B, C, and D that you have on your agenda this evening, those three resolutions. And I know we've talked about what this is all about, and I think how you explained it to me was pretty thorough. So if you would, take a few minutes and explain to Council what's before them.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much for the time. My name is Dana Clark. I'm the PACE Administrator for the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority. I lead the Ports Better Buildings Northwest Ohio Program, which essentially offers long-term, below-market, fixed-rate financing for commercial properties that want to make improvements to their building that have an energy-efficient related component. So most of the properties that I provide financing for improve similar things. It might be roofing, doors, windows, HVAC, electrical improvements, things of that nature. I'm here tonight because there's a project in Maumee that would like to utilize our program. The facilities at 1294 and 1298, Conant, they're doing a variety of things, more specifically roofing, doors, HVAC, LED lighting improvements. The building offers multi-use commercial space for tenants to operate maybe a small workshop, warehouse, small functions of their business to lease out from them. There's also a couple of the owners' businesses that occupy that space. So basically, I wanted to come and offer some kind of refreshment on what our program is. Maumee was an early partner to our PACE program, which has been in existence for 15 years now. We've offered over 200 PACE financing opportunities throughout Northwest Ohio. And in Maumee right now, I think we have about five active PACE loans that are still flowing through repayment. So what I'm presenting this evening are three documents, and I'm just going to read my notes so I recall which one describes which. But the resolution that we'll be presenting is approving the petition for special assessment. These PACE loans that we offer have repayment that is unlike traditional financing where there is a mortgage lien placed on the property, our repayment can be seen through special assessment on the real estate tax schedule. So the easiest way for me to explain that is, basically, we partner with the county to have the assessment show on the tax schedule. The property owner remits the payment like they normally do to the county. All the special assessments will flow back through the city of Maumee like they do now, but our portion of our payment will be lumped into that assessment total. So we're asking for participation from the city to, when they receive that payment, to remit it further on to us so that borrower can pay down their loan until the maturity of the loan. So the resolution approving special assessment presents that legislation to ask the municipality to approve the special assessment for this project specifically as necessity for repayment on the loan. There are two ordinances. The first ordinance determining to proceed formalizes the participation of the municipality within what we call our Energy Special Improvement District, which Maumee has already had, like I said, a 15-year relationship within that district. Basically, Ohio Revised Code dictates that PACE loans have to flow through what are called Energy Special Improvement Districts, or ESIDS. And then the last piece is the ordinance levying special assessment. So final piece of legislation, after the resolution ordinance above our pass, it formalizes our agreement to levy the property's real estate taxes for the loan repayment via special assessment. There are many benefits to PACE, but I would say the majority of property owners like our program because we offer a low cost of capital, always long-term, below-market, fixed-rate financing, and we partner really well with other financing that might be coming in place. So we work well alongside banks, grant programs, other capital that they may have. By design, all of our programs are a tool for economic development, and we always hope to have the community turn to us if there's ever an opportunity for us to help a business repair, revitalize, refurbish, something that may have that need for energy-efficient components.
That was pretty thorough.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council, have any questions?
I just had one question. Thank you. That's a great thing.
Thank you.
It's nice to see something just more revitalized and come in, like the church has done something kind of earth-shattering, which is great, and this is another, you know, I think just more continuation.
Thank you.
I had a question. You mentioned it was commercial. Is there any residential involvement in these two addresses?
At one time, PACE in Ohio offered a residential arm, and the Toledo Port did offer residential financing as well. A few years back, the Ohio Revised Code and guidance changed around the residential arms. So right now, all PACE lenders in Ohio do not offer residential PACE programs. If that changes, and we can do that again, we would gladly enter back into that market, but it is not something that's currently offered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to clarify the process. So does it begin with the commercial property owners approaching you, saying, "Hey, would you like to do this?"
Yes.
And then Maumee is just going to function as a passing through?
Correct.
What they pay?
Yes. Yeah. So Maumee's responsibility would be that the county will collect payments as they normally do. All of the city taxes, special assessments, and things would flow through the municipality anyway. Once that is received and recorded, we ask that our portion come to us. That's it.
So there really is no cost to Maumee, basically?
Correct.
Since the Port Authority is a special district, it needs to use a conduit to get the money back?
Correct. Yes.
Even better news. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Ziz, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. It says that there was a petition submitted and plan submitted to the city. I was just wondering when those were submitted?
I don't know if I know the date, but the legislation is with you guys already. Or did you mean when the relationship was formed?
Well, I was just asking because I don't know how close you pay attention to Maumee, but emergency legislation has a little bit of a stigma to it. So I would like to know if we're close to that 60-day period, or if there is a reason why it should be by emergency as opposed to having a first reading and then a second reading?
When we prepare the legislation, we request that things be read and passed under emergency order, mostly so that the project itself can keep moving forward, so the borrower has the opportunity to do the improvements and disperse the funds. But certainly will always honor the number of readings that the municipality requires. So, you know, whatever is determined there is absolutely fine with me. Any other questions I can answer?
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll proceed to committee the whole. President Barrow?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Council, you have your agenda in front of you. Do we have any questions, concerns? Councilman Lineback?
Surprise. Just a quick one. So I see under the consent calendar, Item E, we're going to approve the job description prepared by WorkSpring for the HR manager, which I think we said would be the first step in being able to recruit for that position. Is the intent, once we approve this, if we approve this tonight, which I think we will, is to begin that recruitment process immediately?
Not immediately. We have some other concerns that we talked about in personnel. We just wanted to have Council look in, first and foremost, look at the personnel, HR description as a manager.
Could you elaborate on that? I mean, I was at that personnel meeting. I know there was some
Right.
differing opinions about when recruitment should start. What particular issues are you talking about?
Well, we're also looking for an administrator, which is pretty obvious. And during the course of the meeting tonight, or maybe before the next meeting, some things will be shared, where we're going to be going forward with that person, that HR spot. But we're not there yet. This is a first step in it.
If I can chime in on that.
Sure.
In talking with WorkSpring on this, and just kind of talking strategy with that as well, they've been in this business for quite some time, and I tend to agree with what their assessment is, is that really the paramount thing is to find an administrator and put that into place, and then everything else to follow after that. And that should really be the compass at this point, and to try to get that position filled since it's needy at this point, and there's a lot of issues in the city that demand that attention that aren't getting it. And so I would just recommend to Council that we really focus on the administrator first and foremost, and then proceed from there.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is, and I mean, I can bring this up at personnel too, but I guess I don't understand why we can't advertise for multiple positions at once, and why there's an inability to focus on anything but one position at a time. But then kind of with that, you know, why have we moved forward with HR position prior to the city administrator position? I mean, really, for myself, I didn't understand why we didn't start taking some of these steps during the timeframe after which we got the resignation in the last day, to essentially hit the ground running to make sure we weren't, we did not have a chunk of time in which we were without some pretty key positions. And now it's like, we don't have a job description for the city administrator last personnel. There was talk about whether, you know, WorkSpring was going to do a job description, or whether we were going to, you know, keep the job description we've had and we've used for a long time. But for whatever reason, we just keep not advertising for these positions, and it's kind of mind-boggling to me.
So the thing before Council tonight is to approve a job description, not stretchy?
And still not advertise for the position.
Not at this point. I had something on Number 10 under New Business. I believe, I want to make sure I have the right, this is the ordinance 029, 2025, amending the ordinance in part to administrator's salary. I would like to table this and have WorkSpring do an analysis for our pay structure with our director's pay and the administrator's pay, something that's current, and have an outside source put something like that together. So I'd like to table that and have WorkSpring do a workup on this. This is very impacting, and I think we need to have a professional company look at it.
So is this all leading up to hiring WorkSpring to be a temporary HR person up until we get an HR person hired? Because it sure does seem like it.
I'm not quite. What were you petitioning to table?
I was petitioning to table Number 10A. We had a range of salaries given to us, and I think this was done within our city. I would like a professional company, WorkSpring, to look at the prevailing wages across the area and get competitive and current pricing of where we're at with director's pay, for example, administrator pay, for example.
If I recall, this was recommended by the Personnel Committee to adjust the ordinance so we had a pay range for an administrator so we could market that position. We need that salary range put in place in order for us to put a job description and a pay range out for somebody to put interest in.
Understand.
If we don't pass this tonight, and you want to delay that, it will delay that as well.
Then I had a question on the pay range. There's a pay range, and I don't know what an administrator's pay range is going to be. Is the proposed ordinance that we have, is that an amount where we can get an administrator with years of experience that we're probably going to be looking?
It falls in line with all of our directors. It takes all of our directors and puts them in the same pay range.
But should your administrator be at the same pay scale as directors, is my point? I may that be more personal.
That's for your discussion.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I make a motion. We have a discussion.
Based on personnel meeting, it thought it was decided that all the measures should be in the same pay ranges as directors, which is why we have this on here tonight. So I guess I'm wondering what changed.
Well, the only thing that changes, the same point I brought up during that meeting, is I believe that the administrator should not be on the same line as your directors. There should be a difference in pay, an increase in pay.
Do you brought that up at the personnel meeting?
I did.
Oh, I don't remember that. Believe it was not voted on.
But it was voted on, and we put it all on the same one.
Okay. Is there a motion to table this, or not?
No, I won't do that. I won't hold it up any longer. Thank you.
All right.
We'll continue. Are there any other questions on the agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead, Margot.
I just have a very minor kind of clarification. So 9B, I'm just wondering, so it mentioned that we're confirming appointment of Ben Haywood to the Joint Economic Development Board to replace Patrick Birch. Is this a temporary appointment until we would get a new city administrator? I didn't know if that board required the city administrators to be a part of it, or whether, you know, he would stay on, or...
It doesn't.
Okay.
It does require somebody to either be a resident or employed by the city, which is not. So now we have a vacancy. So this, it does not state when this, this is typically a two-year assignment. So I would amend that to include...
Well, you say the balance of Patrick's term.
Yeah.
His term is indefinite.
The balance of Patrick's term basically was set up by Mayor Carr, and the indefinite thing was to just roll over from two years to two years. But all that is moot at this point. So it is a two-year term. We have two that are on there right now that expire at the end of this year, and I am asking for the appointment of Mr. Haywood till December 31st of '27.
Okay, so the remainder of this year and then the two years?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Still my question? One of my questions.
Are there any more questions from Council? Chelsea?
I have a question. I know we're doing a pretty minor update on the Design Review Board, but as I was looking through and just sort of researching, there's a lot of legislation and codified ordinances attached to the Design Review Board that do not match the fact that it is now an appeals board as opposed to an adjudicative board. In our codes right now, it says that the Design Review Board is the only board that issues certificates of appropriateness within the Design Review District. There's a lot more legislation sort of attached to it that hasn't been updated. I would make a recommendation that the Design Review Board legislation goes back to the Municipal Planning Committee in general because of all of those sort of, you know, I guess, conflicts in the code. It doesn't really make a lot of sense when you read through it all.
Part of that should be addressed by the Temporary Zoning Administrator. He's going to work on some of the code issues that we have too, so...
Because that was one of my questions. I know it's a very minor update, but it also says in our codes that any zoning updates go through the Municipal Planning Commission. This is obviously a very minor one, but...
I checked with the commission, let them know, and they were okay with it.
They were okay with it, because that was...
Not having to put it before the board for just to change the date of the term, so...
Yeah, and that's, like I said, a very simple, small one, but reading through it and doing some more research, it is apparent that there's a lot of conflict in how it's being applied. So I'd like for us to take a look at that or refer that to that commission to look at.
The ordinance, you mean, for this?
Yes, the Design Review Ordinance is the Design Review District, Overlay District.
The current change, you mean?
In general, just...
In general?
Yes.
I said the zoning person that we have coming in is going to look at our ordinances and address some of these things, and then we...
And the commission wouldn't take a look at it, too?
Well, then they would. We would make presentations to the Planning Commission for their approval or disapproval, you know, and forward it to Council.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because it says in the Planning Commission ordinance that they can initiate and make recommendations, not just be presented them. So I wasn't sure what the actual...
They typically don't make their own.
They don't make, they typically don't?
Correct.
Okay.
So, just so, so this isn't on the agenda. This is just something, an opinion you have.
This is in addition to looking through and realizing that a lot more needs to be updated than what's on it.
Okay. All right.
But we can do that with Alan, make notation, or we can just have that looked at when we do that part-time person here. And Margot, you have something?
Well, Alan kind of led into a question that I had with talking about, so 9D, the agreement with Zoning Solutions LLC. So I guess I was, a couple of questions. I was wondering why we didn't get to see the agreement is one of them. Also, when you brought up them kind of reviewing the code in general, that's quite an ask. If I remember correctly, I thought at Personnel it talked about eight to 10 hours. I don't know if that was just an example given, like, per week, that they would be essentially helping with immediate need... essentially helping with immediate needs and, like, projects we have coming in right now. So it seems like quite a jump to go from, you know, the eight to 10 hours a week to, like, actually going through our code, because we have a lot of issues with our code. It's one of the things we've talked about after getting the master plan done, like, doing a whole kind of code revamp, which then moves into my next thing, which would go along well with getting the urban planning position advertised and filled. So I guess those are kind of all my questions stemming around 9D.
Yeah, the final agreement, he sent over an agreement, but it needed to be modified, and I was out and wasn't able to do that. But this just authorized the mayor to finalize that agreement so we can get that started. The terms are acceptable, so.
The terms that we have for that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do recall the eight to 10 hours, it was going to be like 40 hours a week, a month or something like that?
Correct.
And I think it was said that someone in the administration would dictate that person's work, correct?
We can't dictate, per se, but, you know, we need projects to work on, and some of it'll be.
That's what I mean, in terms of assigning the work to do. So it would be one thing to assign them work to, you know, review these applications for, you know, these permits, whatever it is, and it would be something else to say, we start reviewing our zoning code.
Right. Yeah, and so it'll be, like I said, the primary function initially will be to clean up some of the nuisance issues that we have going on and get started on some of those things. And then also, he does do a lot of work in zoning code updates, so any issues that we have, and I have plenty, too, that we need to talk about, you know, ultimately, and he's going to start looking at some of those and give us suggestions about what kind of updates we can or should make. And it could be to the point where we just need to revamp our zoning code to modernize it in other respects for housing, for commercial, to allow progression, I guess, of the city in certain areas.
Why would that not be a great task for the Planning Commission?
They generally look for guidance from, from the city and from people that specialize in zoning manners, especially updates to the code. They don't write code. They look at it and review it once it's presented to them and see how it fits for the city of Mami, so they don't generally write zoning code.
I'd be interested to talk to them about that. I mean, that may be correct, but I've never had a discussion with Tom Durst or the Planning Commission about that. They might like the challenge. I don't know.
Okay, and Margot?
Did it say in the agreement, like, I guess it was still kind of unclear the last time, like, during Personnel, is there a timeframe, like, 90 days was mentioned? But we, we talked about, I thought, that it didn't have to be 90 days. I guess they wanted to confirm that.
Correct.
Okay, is this going to hold up at all, advertising for the urban planning position? I also saw it as, like, just a kind of beneficial kind of placeholder?
Right.
To make sure we don't get backed up. Okay. Thank you.
Chelsea?
So because we haven't seen this contract, we don't know what the cost will be. Is it renewable? Do we have an idea on any of that?
I think he, I think you said that in the Personnel Committee, what the cost was.
There was an hourly estimate.
There was an estimate.
He gave that.
Like 120 an hour or something? I can't remember what the number was. And I have talked to other people who've used him, highly regarded.
Great.
Highly regarded individual.
I just want to make sure that we're aware of what the costs might be going forward, because right now it isn't in here, and we didn't get a report from the Personnel Committee saying that.
Alan, did you have anything else on that?
My phone wasn't so slow, I could tell you more detail.
Oh.
I guess mine isn't a question. I can just wait till we do the consent calendar. I just want to know, kind of like, you've mentioned something kind of after the fact Personnel coming. I just wanted to know kind of a disagreement I had with, with item in our, the Chapter 103 finance thing, but, so I can just do that when we go over, ask for commentary?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's just eight to 10 hours a week cost not to exceed $150 per hour, depending on the project, so. Like I said, there's just some other general terms that we usually put in our contract to show at least not employee for purrs, purposes.
Sure.
Independent contractor type language.
Right, and is that a renewable contract?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Haven't seen none. This is the end of the, the whole.
Okay, thank you. We move to citizen comments. The meetings of council are business meetings for purposes of discussion by council and consideration of matters or issues related to the business of Mami. The purpose of the meeting rules is to promote efficient, orderly, and productive meetings and reduce disruption. Meetings at the, of Mami City Council are lawful meetings under Mami Code and the Highway Vice Code that no purpose, no person with purpose to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting shall do any act which obstructs or interferes with the due conduct of the meeting. So members are allowed to speak at our meetings under the rules set by council. All comments should be respectful. Council meetings are not the forum for personal attacks. The citizen comment period is meant for matters or issues related to the business of Mami. Ms. Sheri Shank?
Okay, I don't know how many are aware, but there was a post on Facebook today with videos and photos of Gabe Barrow with Patrick Birch, who is no longer an employee, and Josh Harris also meeting up with Birch to obviously discuss city business. The dates on the photos clearly show the meetings took place just prior to Monday's council meetings. I enlarged one of the photos where Barrow and Birch are looking at a laptop screen, and I can see what looks like the city logo in a box at the bottom right corner of the laptop screen. So it's a, it's definitely an email or a city correspondence with, I assume, the packet information, meeting agenda notes. I had a problem with Gabe that I brought up in regards to contacting individuals and questioning why they signed a recall petition. That is clearly, the person was Audrey Chabot, who was in hospice and recently passed away. That is clearly voter intimidation, and it violates voting laws. Now we have damning photos and videos of Barrow meeting with Birch, who is not an employee, and reviewing city information. How many of you other council members condone their behavior and knew that they were meeting? Are you aware of this? There is no place for unethical, very possibly illegal actions and activity from these two council members, period. I request that action is taken immediately and Barrow and Harris are removed immediately. Your actions rightfully disqualify them from representing Mami. I don't want that for my city. You both need to resign.
Mr. Jim Koval?
Jim Koval, Mami. First of all, congratulations to the two proclamations at the city council meeting. I attended my first council meeting last month, and I, I suggested that council look at putting a proclamation out denouncing political assassination. I understand this, this body is in a hard time coming up with that. Seems to me some people are putting politics over human life. Well, I believe in redemption. I'm going to give you another chance. You have until 5:00 PM, or excuse me, noon Friday, as a body, to come up with a proclamation. I'm going to make it easier for you. I'll make it softer, because some people, obviously, it's too hot politics-wise, that basically any stalking, physical harassment, physical assault, verbal, and yes, murder is unacceptable. And this body speaks up to that. If it can't, then I'm going to take it upon myself to make Mami citizens, and I'm talking about the whole city, I've got a plan. Everyone will know the date, the time, and the location that you could not raise your hand to that. And I'm also going to put this down, not only that, but based on, this is easier for you now, okay? Democrats, listen, race, religion, sexual orientation, and political affiliation. There is no place, and we as a country are falling apart, and you know we are, I hope you know we are, but some people need to understand life over politics. And I think the American people, including Mami, when this goes out, and you're part of this, you know, by the way, if you're not for election this time, don't worry. When you come up, I'll remember your name. But it's going to be a, it's going to be a blast, okay? So I hope by 12:00 noon that the mayor, you could get to the marketing person and put out a press release by 12:00 noon where you stand. And if you don't, I would appreciate the courtesy of emailing me that, that you couldn't come up with that. And I will follow up with the stations, 24, yes, 11, 13, and the blade, because I will ask for press and point your names out. I'm not going to play games. Stand up, be a leader, be proud of Mami, stand for something. We've had a black eye in Northwest Ohio, and damn it, can't we approve standing up for life? Be a leader on your political side. And so, Democrats, you're getting intimidated. Don't be intimidated. And regarding political assassination, the, the people in Minnesota, and I didn't know about it, but I would have mentioned it, there's no right. I don't care if you're a Democrat, the people that got assassinated in Minnesota, or you're Republican. We just saw that happen. I don't care who you are. I don't, okay, thank you. But I don't care what, again, just to repeat, race, religion, political.
Thank you, Mr. Koval. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That, all those things are illegal, anyway. Thank you. Ms. Suzanne Peets from Waterside, please.
Let's see what kind of guts this political body has, okay? Because I'm not playing, I'm not threatening, but as a mayor.
I can't have you disrupt a meeting anymore. Thank you. You had, you had your shot. Thank you. Yep.
Suzanne Peets, and I live very close to Fallen Timbers Mall. And I just wanted to ask a question, if there's been any.
Excuse me, could you push the mic down?
Oh, you can hear me. Here we go. Can you hear me? I live close to Fallen Timbers Mall, and I hear a lot of rumors about a potential data center in the Fallen Timbers overlay area. I don't want to panic at all. I have done a lot of research on data centers, and I personally am not in favor of them in such a residential area. But I'm wondering if the city has received any proposals from any organizations or has had any discussions as to what to do with that land before I, you know, so I can be informed of my thinking?
We won't answer that right now. Maybe during council's comments, we can do that.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hardy, I'm sorry.
I wanted to follow up on the Personnel that you guys are talking about. I've been at the meetings, I know what's going on here. I can't encourage you enough to fill that position first. That HR professional will be able to do all of your compensation reviews, will be able to go out into the community and find out what the layers are of all the different salaries for all the different people within the organizations, Carisberg, Rossford, so on and so forth. I think it would be a smart thing to do is to bring that person in as soon as you can. It will nix a lot of other fees that you might introduce to what the HR WorkSprings. These people know how to pull that research for you. Rather than pay another fee, pay the salary, have them do the work for you.
Thank you. I think that wraps up our citizen comments. I don't think I missed anybody. There was a couple that came in late, so, thank you. All right, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Harris? Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second the average square.
And we'll call the rule.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And approval of the meeting minutes on October 6th. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 6th. Sorry, I can't speak.
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll call the rule.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. That's approved. Petition and communications, we have none. 9, we have a consent calendar. We'll take a motion in a second, and we'll discuss these.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent calendar, all, all items on the consent calendar.
Now, second that.
Thank you. 9A is a recommendation of the mayor to appoint John Sayer to the Mami Charter Review Advisory Commission for the balance of the term held by Scott Singleton, who resigned after the last meeting. He wrote us a letter saying he didn't, no longer wanted to serve. And B is a recommendation from the mayor to appoint Ben Haywood to the Joint Economic Development Zone Board to replace the vacancy left by Mr. Birch. That term will run through the end of December 31st, 2027. Just a little background on Mr. Haywood. He grew up in Mami. He's lived here his entire life. He lives in the Uptown area currently with his family. He did go to Union School, Gateway School at the time when he went to school there, graduated from St. John's, and is a managing partner of Marshall Melhorn Law Firm since 2020, or 2013. He's a very knowledgeable and capable person. I think he would serve Mami's interests very well on that board. C is a recommendation from the mayor, a second reading of ordinance 28-2025, an ordinance amending the Mami Codified Ordinance, Section 1105.03, the Design Review Board, and ordinance 106, 2020. That, in other words, it's basically stating the terms to expire at the end of the year. It's cleaning up some language on that. D is a recommendation from the law director, authorizing the mayor, does need to enter an agreement with the Zoning Solutions LLC to provide zoning-related services for the city of Mami for a 90-day period. That was also discussed in the Personnel Committee. E is a recommendation from the Personnel Committee to approve the job description by WorkSpring for the Human Resource Manager. F is a recommendation from the Finance Committee, it's the first reading of 30-2025, an ordinance amending 103, and ordinance number 26-2023 of the Mami Codified Ordinance, updating the requirements for contracts within the city of Mami. Recommendation under G from the law director, first reading of 31-2025, an ordinance repealing ordinance 39-2021, titled an ordinance to grant expedited authority for the solicitation and awarding of contracts. Any further comments or offerings for the consent calendar?
Yes, Ms. Puffenberger.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment a little bit more on the Chapter 103, so letter F. There, there is one kind of disagreement that I and my other fellow Finance Committee members had. I really do believe that on, in 103.05A, that we should somehow present formally to council. I think it just notes that it's presented to council and doesn't say in a meeting. I think there should be some more, more of a formal presentation at a meeting, so it's easier to kind of look back on. People have public information requests, et cetera. It's kind of like a paper trail, even if it was, you know, a part of PNC or something for the meeting, but I would like to see that change. I just wanted to share that with the rest of council. Thank you.
Is that something we can look at in the future, relive this ordinance again?
Correct. I mean, some of the contracts, especially the construction ones, Matt can attest to, are significant. Hundreds of pages, and putting them in the record would be difficult to maintain properly.
And that's why we talked about, there's like an overview summary sheet as being an option to, that we could review instead of the very large documents.
Okay, thank you. Did you have something?
Yes, just a kind of, sort of, to piggyback off of that, we were talking about, to potentially have, it does say in there to have access, but I do agree that it would be good. I know that it can be tough to have these large, sometimes 500 and 600-page contracts directly in the rec. directly in the record, but since they are public record, pretty much no matter what, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to what the issue with that would be? With having it be a part of the record. That's what, it said it would make it hard to be part of the record, but it is already public record.
It's just a question of what's the remedy if it doesn't happen, and what's the other gonna do with it, and is the whole thing void then after the fact? So, just creates other dilemmas.
Okay.
If it's not properly presented, if you miss a page, miss two pages of it, or anything like that, that wasn't properly presented to council.
Well, that's kind of the point, right? To have it be properly presented to council? I guess I'm still very confused as to-
If there's a contract that's out there and somebody doesn't get it to council in time, does that mean the whole contract's void and cannot be enforced? Or it's after the fact, somebody's already started work? It just creates a lot of different dilemmas in that fact. And you're putting it as a law, and so does that person get punished criminally for that?
But we already have it in here that it needs to be presented to council. In these adjustments that we made, we just didn't put the need to be presented at a council meeting. So what my worry is, is that, you know, I'm gonna get a paper flash to me in, you know, a random meeting or we're at a event, and that was my presentation. Like, I guess I'm just wanting some sort of, like, better definition of what qualifies as presenting to us. It's not just made mention in a random place at a random time, and that qualifies as a presentation. Like, I guess if we can put kind of like the summary and like a link to look on the website, if a contract, if you so please want to read 500 to 600-page document, you can, but at least we have it noted in here that, you know, if we're gonna be doing that anyways, I guess I don't see why noting that in our council meeting that it was given to council, you know? How that's creating any other hassles, when it's still in the document, we're just making kind of a more visual note that it was done.
Well, I think, I think what Alan is, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I think what Alan is alluding to, that if that document doesn't come in in a specific amount of time and recorded, then it becomes null and void, or we could have a suit brought against us.
So it's meant to be as broad as possible, just to cover all aspects of it from a legal perspective, so.
So this is a recommendation from the Finance Committee, of which you were the chair. So are you retracting this whole thing?
No, I'm not retracting it. I'm just sharing a concern that I had at the meeting. I wanted to share it with the rest of the council members. But it does say in here that we, it's a 30-day timeframe already. So, I mean, and this, I thought, you know, was one of the reasons why we have the three readings, so we can bring these up kind of to everyone. I get that, you know, we did as much as we could in the committee meeting, which I think was very beneficial. It was a long process. We went over two meetings, but then kind of bringing this more honed-in one to council, this could be something we could still kind of talk about, is what my thought was.
Okay, all right. I pick up on it now. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes. Mr. Lineback?
Is it possible to schedule a Finance Committee meeting for next week to discuss that specific issue?
They did discuss it.
Yeah.
Well, she's saying that it's a concern. It doesn't sound-
Well, but, I mean, we discussed it, like I kind of noted at the beginning of the meeting. I did not agree with it. The others were fine with it. I just wanted to bring it to council as well. I mean, that's, so-
Okay, understand.
I feel like that's a discussion we can have if we care to. If no one else sees a problem with it, fine. It's just something I wanted to note.
Thank you. Okay, no further discussion. We will call the roll on the consent calendar.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent calendar passes. We'll go to 10A, new business, a recommendation from the Personnel Committee to approve ordinance 29-2025, amending ordinance 11-2025, the pay range for administrator and directors of law, finance, and public service, beginning November 1 of 2025 and continuing through 26 and 2027. Need two motions on this. Yes, Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules and waive three readings.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And then I move to approve ordinance 029, 2025, to modify the pay range for the administrator and directors of law, finance, and public service, beginning November 1, 2025, and continuing through 2026 and 2027.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
The next three ordinances or resolutions, I'm sorry, are relative to the PACE dollars that was explained to you in committee, the whole. 10B is a recommendation of the law director to approve Resolution 30-2025, and I'll let the council that's making the motion read this. I need two motions, please. Mr. Barrow?
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Then I move to approve Resolution 030, 2025, a resolution approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvement projects under Ohio Revised Code Chapter 1710, approving the necessity of acquiring construction and improving certain public improvements in the city of Ma'ami, Ohio, in cooperation with the Northwest Ohio Advanced Emergency, oh, sorry, Energy Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
And I will second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 30-2025 is approved. Go to 10C, a recommendation of the law director to approve ordinance 32-2025. Ms. Sis, would you mind making the motion for this one, please? Under C?
Sorry, may I-
And I believe there's two motions needed for this as well, beyond the last page.
On the third page, Chelsea.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
10C.
I still, I will, make a motion to suspend the rules and declare an emergency. To pass.
A second?
I would second that motion.
Thank you. We'll call the roll on that, please.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance 32-2025 is approved. And under D, a recommendation of the law director to approve ordinance 33-2025. I need two motions for this as well. Mr. Lineback?
Yes, if it expedites the loans getting through for these businesses, I will move to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance 32-2025 is approved. And under D, a recommendation of the law director to approve ordinance 33-2025. I need two motions for this as well. Mr. Lineback?
Yes, if it expedites the loans getting through for these businesses, I will move to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And I'll move to approve ordinance 33, 2025, an ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Ma'ami, Ohio, in cooperation with the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll call the roll on ordinance 33, 2025.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Sis?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance 33-2025 is approved. And I'm sure the business owner here in Ma'ami will appreciate this council expediting this project, so they can get started and the funds can flow. And also, the PACE administrators, I'm sure, are very appreciative to allow this to move forward in a rapid manner. We'll move to council member comments, and I will start off, and I do recognize Mr. Koval's passion for which you've come forward to speak about. Last council meeting, I did speak somewhat to those concerns that you had. And of course, council has their, certainly their freedom to make any statements that they wish concerning that. It is kind of confusing to me that everything you talked about is illegal in our laws. And to state the obvious of those laws is kind of redundant, actually, because the laws are in place to protect everything that you talked about. So I would implore council to listen to Mr. Koval. If you so have the desire to come to council with a comment, that is certainly up to you, or even to see me. And we will move to the next council member, Mr. Kurt.
Thank you. I briefly would like to congratulate St. Joseph Parish, Father Shil, or Father Eric, rather, but particularly the St. Joe's Knights of Columbus. I am a member of the Knights of Columbus at St. John 23rd in Perrysburg, although I haven't had a meeting since I, the meetings are on the first and third Mondays every However, having been the Grand Knight over there, I know what an absolute huge achievement it is for a KFC council to be recognized with an International Program of the Year. The Knights of Columbus, they have, there may be six or seven different programs. One is community, which obviously they earned the Community Program of the Year for the entire international body of the Knights of Columbus. So I wish, I wish they were still here, but hopefully the minutes will reflect my congratulations. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lineback.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Like Councilman Kurt, I wanted to say something about the off-the-streets ministry. It is indeed a great recognition to have this from the international organization, but I expect that those members who serve every week receive their blessing every week, even without an award from some international. As Father Eric said, he was motivated by the Holy Spirit, and so you gotta do what the Spirit says. And the second item, some, one of our speakers, citizens, talked about data centers. My ears have been perking up about data centers, just hearing different things on the news. Heard some podcasts the other day by some real tech giants, talking about various data center projects that have been going on, and several really high-profile projects have been taken back by Google and Microsoft in some very large areas. Indianapolis was one of them, because of concerns that are, they're real, that can happen with the energy price spikes for everybody in the area, concern about water consumption, what that would do to the area, and noise. These podcaster, they're not so much podcasters, they're really tech entrepreneurs, but they have a podcast. They're very much for the data centers, and they're saying that the nation needs data centers to support all the AI computing that's going on. And while that may be true, they also mentioned that, given a lot of the pushback that's coming from municipalities experiencing some of these symptoms that I just mentioned, that the federal government probably needs to get involved. And I think at a minimum, what has to happen is that any project has to mitigate all these concerns. These companies, these private companies that are going and putting them in, they're gonna be the ones that get a lot of benefit, not necessarily the residents being the big benefit, but it's gonna be everybody who uses, you know, cloud resources. But I think you, I don't wanna say rest assured, but I know that should opportunities like that come our way, I know I'm gonna be very vigilant to make sure that our residents' concerns would be mitigated by any project that gets proposed. But I think they're here, they're gonna probably be here somehow, you know, in the decades to come. But I think the key is recognizing that there can be negative effects that are mitigated so that residents aren't harmed. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Puffenberger?
Thank you. So, one of our events for Environmental Advisory Commission, we've got a rain barrel event. I'm happy to report that all 10 spots have been filled, so that event is full again. That's October 27th. We have, we slightly changed directions for our November event. It will be November 5th now at the Ma'ami Indoor Theater, and we'll be showing the film Organic Rising. So invite everyone to come out to see that film. I did wanna take a minute to talk about, just at least mention how the consent order was signed, and now we're kind of trying to hit the ground running to get things in order and figure out how exactly this all looks. I know some of us has made it a point to meet with some of the staff in charge of those programs and kind of get some more ideas, kind of where we're at and how things are going to progress from here. But I did wanna take a moment to read our post from today, the city of Ma'ami's post from today, because I thought it was a nice kind of synopsis of some things. So it says, fixing the system at its source, stopping sewer overflows in Ma'ami. Much of Ma'ami's sewer overflow comes from private drains and sub pumps on residential properties. The city's sanitary sewer remediation program is addressing the issue by making repairs to prevent overflows. What homeowners need to know. City crews need to inspect your home sewer connections. If a problem is found, homeowners are responsible for repairs, but assistance may be available through the sewer grant program. Three steps to participate. One, schedule your sewer inspection. Two, review and sign the sewer commitment form by December 31st, 2025. Two, review and sign the sewer commitment form by December 31st, 2025. Three, apply for a sewer grant. Program progress as of October 17th, 2025. We've had 2,176 inspections scheduled, considering we estimate it's around 4,000 households. That's over 50%, which I was pretty excited to hear those numbers. And 813 inspections have been completed. Background: Over the past five years, Mami has upgraded sewer lines and corrected improper connections. In 2021, STAN Tech began a citywide sewer study, and since June 2024, the focus has shifted to home inspections, a key step in stopping overflows at their source. Need help or have questions, 419-897-7127, or conveyance@mami.org. Says, please note, the Sewer Program Office is now located on the first floor of the police building. We will have more updates to come. It says, for more information and to download the grant application how-to guide, you can go to the website. But, so I just wanted to share that as well. So stay tuned for more.
Thank you. Ms. Ziss?
I, again, you've stolen a lot of what I was going to say. I know that there has been some frustration without a whole lot of fanfare news coming from the city as a whole, but do know that this program is rolling, it is running. You can email conveyance@mami.org, or you can go on the website now, I saw it was up there today, that you can download that how-to guide on the steps to take to apply for that grant. I want to implore all of you to look at the steps that it requires, because if you don't follow the steps, if you go out of order, or do it in a way that isn't how it is spelled out in there, which isn't a whole lot, you get your contractor, you set your commitment form, you get your contractor quotes, you submit them, you apply. If you go out of order of what it says, you could get rejected. So please, 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 make sure that you are going off of what the instructions say so that you don't get left behind. The only other thing I did want to speak on was data centers, too. I've had a lot of people contact me about data centers, and as a tech nerd myself, I have been researching them a lot as well. As far as I am aware, unless we get some sort of, unless a data center requests some sort of tax abatement, it would not come before council because it already exists in our zoning codes. Is that right?
Correct. I don't know, it's been 10-plus years that we've allowed data centers in that zoning district, CM zoning.
So it is something really to pay attention to closely, so check out the, I'm sure they'll talk about it at the JEDs boards or at different townships, to keep an eye on it, but we won't really get a chance to vote on it or do anything about it unless they do request tax abatements. I am still doing research, I'm a researcher, so I haven't formed any opinions other than my initial reaction, which is always, you know, save the water, save the danger, but it'll really come down to what it will bring and what it won't bring. But I do want you all to pay attention. It is obviously something that is going to be generating a lot of interest in Northwest Ohio, whether it's in Mami, whether it's JEDs, or whether it's in the surrounding areas. Pay attention, because I think it's an important thing to keep an eye on.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'd like to thank the volunteers in Mami for making a difference in the lives of the citizens of our city here. Last winter and the winter before, these people gave of their own time, hours incurred, expenses. They sacrificed time with their families that they could have been sitting home in a nice warm house. Instead, they went out and helped many of the senior citizens to do the task that they couldn't do or had to call someone to do. They shoveled sidewalks, they salted the sidewalks, they bought this product with their own money, they picked up cups at Roth Park, they worked at the tow path for over two years, and they still continue to volunteer whatever is asked of them. And this was put on social media, yes it was. And I thought, and I agreed with it, that the act of the community involvement and the kindness was to let our citizens know that your elected officials, employees, and residents think enough of their senior citizens to help them shovel the snow. It can be dangerous work, as we all know, I've fallen two or three times last winter. And because we have a volunteer group to do this, and they're wanting to do this again and again, I'm just saying thank you so much and thank goodness for that. And I imagine we'll probably do that again this winter. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, let me just quickly, for St. Joe's, Father Eric and that group, what they're doing, that is a true mission of a church. They're reaching down, they're helping people at their lowest point of their life, and they're literally, like it says, picking them up off the floor, giving them a bed to sleep in. And Dana Clark, her new to us endeavor, I think that's going to be very good for the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiskus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring up a couple events. One of them is the Drug Take Back happening. I told Chief he could taze me if I forgot to plug it. Drug Take Back this Saturday, right out here in the alley, 10 to 2.
It just doesn't sound.
In the garage, the garage. And then also Wednesday at 4 is the ribbon cutting for the new playground at Ford Field, so looking forward to that. And also, we just got the flyers in for the survey we're doing about trash. It's going to take you to a survey so we can get your input and find out, you know, what you're looking for in services as we move forward. It's not live yet on the website, but if anyone here wants to scan this code, it is live on this paper. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. The only thing I really have is, in my other job as a realtor, with this consent decree that we got on the sewer program, I'm really starting to have some concerns about the, what happens at the beginning of the year. It's going to be a punishment of going down from 100% grant, and with new people moving in, not really understanding this, and I can tell you, I've been doing a lot of open houses, and I talk to other realtors, it seems like there's a lot of information that's not out there. I had someone actually tell me that the entire sewer ordinance is gone, there's nothing to worry about, and that's what they're telling their clients, and that kind of worries me a little bit when people come in here. So I think, being that we just got the consent decree, I think we need to relook at that portion to see if maybe we can have an extension, especially for people that are just moving into the area, so they're not punished immediately when they move in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business is executive session for personnel. I need a motion for that, please. Mr. Barrow?
Thank you. We go into executive session for personnel matters.
Mr. Fiskus, or somebody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will second that motion.
Thank you. Call the rule.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Ziss?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's my gate here.
It is cool.
Okay, we'll take a motion in a second to come out of executive session. I move the exit executive session.
A second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiscus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Per our discussion in executive session, we have a motion.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I am going to move to authorize the mayor or does a need to enter into an agreement with WorkSpring for temporary human resource services for a minimum of four hours per week at a rate of 82.50 per hour, not to exceed eight hours per week.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that?
You need a second first.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, I need a second.
I would second that.
Second. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to point out that as discussed, main focus of this is going to be to hire a permanent HR person and focus on the city administrator search.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. We'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Ziz?
No.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiscus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
And I would second that.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiscus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.